Okay, folks, I show seven o'clock. If we could open the meeting with the pledge to the flag, so if we all rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome, everybody, to the May Village Board meeting for the Village of Red Hook. What we have is our agenda out there, but on nights like this, we bust it a little bit with the permission of the board. We have presentations tonight from the school administrators regarding the budget and different things coming up with the local vote on that. And as part of that will be some library additional referendum, so to speak, on the funding mechanisms for libraries, Tivoli and Red Hook. So I see people from Tivoli, people from Red Hook, and people from the school and our regular folks. The reason I'm holding this one remote mic is the way we work with Panda is it's best if, when you do present, you just hold the mic too, so the voice gets picked up directly to the camera, and then those that watch Panda can hear us better, is our theory anyway. Anyway, so we opened with the pledge, and what we do for the regular attendees, we do have a public hearing set for 7:00 p.m., but we'll just push that back a few minutes. We don't anticipate a lot of time for the folks that are visiting, but I know, would you like to ask them some questions, too? And will you take some, probably more the school in particular, but oftentimes, we get a request, a question from the audience, so you guys prepare for that, too. Okay. That being said, I think I'll hand the mic down to Jay. He can hand it to whoever wants to go first. I would suggest the schools go first, since you're the major presenters. And those of us up here, no, everybody, but I think everybody in the audience knows you, too, Paul Finch, School Superintendent, and Bruce Martin, School Business Manager. We see them every year about this time, and fill us in, Paul and Bruce.
Thanks again for having us. We certainly appreciate that. We are equally as important as our friends in the library. Just a couple of things. We went into the budget cycle this year, same sort of conversation we've had in years past, you know, how do we stay under the tax cap and maintain the quality programming that we offer to kids? How do we think about new and creative opportunities and just making it all work? So this year was kind of an uneventful year from the operating budget perspective. Things came together pretty nicely. We caught a break on health insurance costs. Part of that was just D Hicks increase. We estimated a certain amount, and it was lower than we had estimated going into the budget cycle. And another part of that was negotiating a new health plan with all of our bargaining units. So we had done that, and so those two things combined helped us close the gap. We also realized retirement of five or six teachers and at least three senior support staff members, so that savings helps. And we caught a break on teacher retirement system costs. So all those things coming together helped us to close the gap and come in under the tax cap. It's kind of a curious year because our expenditure budget is actually down year over year. The tax levy is up 2.61 percent. I'm going to let Bruce explain how that happens, because it's kind of counterintuitive. How can your expenses go down, but yet your tax levy still go up slightly? But again, we are under the tax cap. It's a busy ballot this year. Before I even go onto the ballot, I talked just a second ago about the idea of reallocating funds to go after some new things. And so we think that our kindergarten enrollment is going to be down enough so that we can eliminate at least one section of kindergarten and possibly one other section in the elementary school. So we're looking, if that is possible to do, we want to redeploy those funds to support the social, emotional needs of our young students. So we're thinking of a guidance counselor for the elementary school and additional social worker support at the elementary school, because we've recognized the need there. And that's all contingent upon the ability to eliminate sections. Busy ballot, so we've got the school bus replacement that is pretty standard for us in the $330,000 amount. Red Hook Public Library is on our ballot, too, as is the Tivoli Free Library. We've got, every other year, we have to have a vote on whether or not to have a non-voting student board member. I will just say that it's always very helpful for us at the table to hear from the students as to what's happening from their perspective, so I'd encourage folks to vote for that. And a solar project, I understand that you all are involved in your own solar project, but we've got a solar project on the ballot that we'll discuss in more detail in a little bit. I'll let Bruce delve into a little bit more about our operating budget.
Yep, so Paul, as he usually does, hit most of the highlights. I'll just fill in a couple of the in-between items. So Paul mentioned that the budget is down 1.13 percent. We'd like to make a lot of noise and fanfare about that, but in reality, what's going on there is essentially irrelevant to the bulk of the budget. And what that is, is that about 20 years ago, we did a major building project, and we took out 20 years' worth of debt, and that debt was heavily aided by state aid. And in June of 2019, we will make our last payment. So just next month, we'll make our final payment on that 20 years of debt. What that means is, on the expenditure side, a single line item that is in the vicinity of $2 million will fall off. But over on the revenue side, the revenue that supports that in an amount just under $1.9 million will also fall off. So we have over 500 budget codes in our budget, and that one, on the expenditure side, falling out at $2 million, with almost all of its state-supporting revenue falling out as well, is enough to make the bottom line of the budget go down. But all the rest of the budget is really doing what it would normally do. So in the rest of the budget, Paul hit a number of the items, but there's salaries, and there's benefits, and health insurance, and fuel costs, and special ed, and all of those kinds of things that we do every day, all going on in the rest of the budget. And that's the portion of the budget that is funded about 65 percent by local property tax, and the balance of it is funded by those other non-building aid, state aid items. So as Paul said, we are tax cap compliant at 2.61 percent on the tax levy. There are a couple of important...
Before you go into that, one of the things I wanted to mention, I didn't mention state... I didn't mention state aid really helping to close the gap, and that was purposeful. We really didn't realize a lot of state aid this year, really low amount. Do you remember the exact amount? It was like a...
The foundation aid was at 0.75 percent.
It was a very small amount of state aid increase, which is not necessarily what you read in the paper, so always be careful about how you interpret what the numbers that they're putting out. But for us, it really was a minuscule amount of state aid increase this year.
So there are some important dates that folks should be aware of. One of them is actually already passed. We had our public hearing. That was last week. But if you're talking to people who would like to vote in the school district election, it is on May 21st. That's next Tuesday, and it happens from noon until 9:00 p.m. in the Mill Road 3-5 Cafeteria. And folks do have to be registered if they want to vote in that election. And they can either be registered through the regular general election process, the county election process, or they can be registered directly through the school district exclusively for school district votes. And we have one more voter registration for the school district voters, and that's on this Wednesday, the day after tomorrow. So that's Wednesday, May 15th, and that's from noon until 9:00 p.m., and it's in the lobby of the Mill Road Elementary School. So those are the remaining two important dates for folks to know. Voter registration on the 15th at the Mill Road Lobby from noon to 9:00, and the vote itself on May 21st, Tuesday, from noon to 9:00 in the Mill Road 3-5 Cafeteria. You want to talk solar for a couple of minutes?
A board of education member?
There's, in addition to the items on the ballot that Paul mentioned, there is a board election. There are two seats that expire on June 30th of 2019, so two vacant seats for a three-year term, and we have two incumbents, Johanna Moore and Maggie Rothwell, running for those two seats. So essentially uncontested, two candidates, two incumbents, running for two seats. Paul started to talk about a solar project. I've described the solar project as an opportunity that fell into our lap and may or may not fall back out of our lap. About a month to six weeks ago, we were talking to the New York Power Authority, which is a state authority that focuses on energy in New York State, and we were talking to the New York State Education Department Office of Facilities Planning, and they were both telling us that, for the first time that we knew of at that moment, that the solar project could be done as a state-aided capital project. And that was going to put us in a position where we could finally do solar at a net revenue to the district. So we were very interested. The board was very interested, and they passed a resolution to put solar on the ballot on May 21st. We've continued to have ongoing conversation with NIPA, with the State Education Department, and our level of certainty on the state aid has ebbed and flowed a little bit over that period of time. Fiscally, the project works if the state aid comes through, and it really doesn't work if the state aid doesn't come through. And as of the most recent update, it's starting to trend back toward they think they may aid it. So it remains on the ballot for May 21st, and if we can settle that discussion in a favorable way with the State Education Department and get the appropriate state aid on the project, we end voter approval on the 21st, we would move forward with a solar project on the roofs of the three instructional buildings at the Red Hook Central School District.
It helps us lock in a nice certa grant if we get the approval on the 21st in the amount of about $375,000, if I recall correctly. So we're moving forward cautiously. We're excited about the idea of having a solar project. That's a win for the district and the environment, but we're committed that if the state aid doesn't come through, to put a hold on it. I'll give you an auditorium update just quickly. I saw the, our first trailer has arrived, construction trailer over at the high school, so we're getting close to breaking ground. We hope to sign construction contracts officially. Hopefully, this Friday, we'll have a special board meeting to do that, and then we should be off and running. The thing we want every community member to know is that our general contractor's bid came in higher than we were expecting, enough that we felt we had to go back and look at do some value engineering on the project, a little of that, and also go back out to Kevin Cahill and say, hey, this is the market. We had plenty of bids. What do you think about being able to support us with some additional funding to make sure we make this happen? And he has come through with an additional $500,000, and the Red Hook Education Foundation is donating $100,000 to the project. Because it's a capital project, we need voter approval to actually accept that money, so we've scheduled a special vote just to be able to accept and use that money toward the capital project, and that's on June 18th. More information will be coming from me on that.
I have one that we can go to. On the over-budget part of the auditorium, does the $600,000 make it go back to the original plan, or is it still going to be engineered differently?
We, so this is what happened. We were fortunate that we had Lou Rodriguez with the Plumbo Group as our construction manager, because he was involved in the Germantown Project and the Pine Plains Project. And when they went out to bid, and those bids came in, and he saw those bids were coming in high, and they were both auditorium projects, renovations and some new construction. He said, let's go back, this was before we even went out to bid, he said, let's go back and value engineer the project. So we did a whole bunch of value engineering. We limited the size of the lobby, for example. We took out some alternative, some ideas that we had, you know, when you go into it, you have this wish list. So we took some things off of our wish list, and we brought it down to a more reasonable place. But even with those, we had a higher-than-expected bid from our general contractor, and I think we had four bids. So the short answer to your question is, yes, it'll, with the Cahill money, it'll be covered and we'll be fine, knock on wood, we'll be fine. But I don't anticipate going back out with that $600,000 and saying, let's expand the lobby again, let's do, let's go after some things that we took out, unless we get to the end of the project and we see that we have money available to do that, I would just hold that money, hold that money back in reserve until we're sure that we can get what we promised the community. Does that make sense? Okay. Questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Well, why don't we put up, looks like the Tivoli person has the mic, so that's half the battle. So you want to introduce yourself and your colleague?
I'm sorry, I did not grab enough big flyers.
Cool. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to? We can share this, just give it back to me. William. So I'm Erica Kane. I'm the outgoing board president for the Tivoli Free Library. Alexa is with me today, who's our incoming president, but I'm presenting because I've done all the legwork and helped put the budget together for the past couple of years. We are both disappointed and excited that our library director is not here today, because she is actually out auditioning for Jeopardy today. So we're all keeping our fingers crossed that we'll be watching for her some evening soon. We haven't, the Tivoli Library hasn't been here to talk to you all in about five years. When we came out five years ago, under our previous president, we had asked for a fairly large increase in our budget, and at the time, had made a commitment to that. We thought that was going to get us through five years and help us complete our ground floor renovation of our east room. We did complete the renovation on the east room, and it has gotten us through five years, some years by the skin of our teeth, but we made it through that commitment. We've done a, we did a very nice renovation on the east room, and if you haven't been around to see it, we would love to see you all. We were able to move most of our, all of our young adult collection and our audiobooks over into that new space, as well as having it as a flexible programming space that has been really useful, and it gives us a little bit of room to expand, particularly if there are study groups or things like that, that needed to just be a little bit out of the library. The extra space allowed us to reorganize the main library as well, so we've been able to kind of improve the crowd flow and put in some reading nooks and things in there that we're very happy with. But having gotten through these five years and completed our goals there, we also upgraded all of our IT. We've improved, replaced and improved our Wi-Fi in the library, replaced all of our desktop computers and our laptops, so we feel like we're in the 21st century now. We've gotten to the point where our budget really is at its max, and so we've started to look forward. The portion of our budget that comes from the school district is $80,000, so we're asking for a 2 percent increase for $1,600, which is not a ton, but it's going to help us keep ahead of mostly our biggest issue that we're seeing, compression in, our rising healthcare costs and salary costs, particularly with increasing minimum wage in New York. We're at a point where we're trying to, well, let me step back. The Tivoli Library Board has made a commitment over the last few years to try as much as we possibly can to make sure that our staff are being paid a living wage. So we don't hire people, or we don't hire them for very long right at minimum wage in the first place, because we're trying to keep people, we want our staff to stay, and as much of an incentive as we can make that, that they can afford to live here in Dutchess County, for the most part, on what we can pay them. But we also have this complication with rising minimum wage rates, that we have people who've been with us for years and years, and the salary or the pay rate that it took them maybe five or six or seven years to get to is now what we hire people at. So we're trying to prevent having senior staff paid the same as, you know, new coming summer help. So that compression issue that we're trying to keep ahead of has been a bit of a hurdle, and this would help with that. The other issue is healthcare costs. We do offer some help paying for a portion of healthcare for our full-time employees, should they choose to take that. We can't pay everything, but we feel like we can make a contribution. And the healthcare rates from year to year are all over the place. They said that with the school, right? Is that any given year, your healthcare rates could change, I don't know, any year. We try to build a cushion into our budget, but there have been years where we have had to go back in and, in the middle of the year, reallocate our budget, because there were huge jumps in healthcare costs. So really, we're in a good place with our programming. We have had, in the five years since we got, we came to see you guys last, we're seeing 30 percent more visitors, we're running 40 percent more programs, and we have twice as many children participating in our programs. There's some information with the actual numbers on the back of your handouts about how many attendees we're getting, the use of the different programs, and it's all looking very good. And so the thing that we need to be able to do is keep going in that, you know, upward direction and keep things together. So this is our first step for that. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? So I guess, in the big picture, the same ballot, like the school administrators indicated, it's school, information, library, Tivoli, and then Red Hook, all separately listed.
Yep. We're Proposition 4. I think Red Hook is 3. I think the school buses are 2, and the school budget is 1. And then somewhere after that are all the other ones.
Just to clarify, we're pass-through for them, you know, we're not funded.
Right. They collect this extra bit of revenue and then pass it on. We get, both Red Hook and Tivoli, a portion of our funding comes from, directly from the taxpayers in the regular election, and then because we both cover the school district, so we get, we also get a portion from the school district. So that covers people who are not Red Hook town residents, but our school district residents who have every right and are welcome to use the libraries, and we see them, as well as people from outside of the district, but...
Good. Thank you. We'll move to the Red Hook folks. If you could just say who you are and...
Good evening. I'm Jill Hall. I'm trustee and treasurer for the Red Hook Public Library. This is Don O'Shea, who's also a member of our board. I've been with the Red Hook Public Library going on my final 15th year. So as the role of treasurer, I also do the budgeting and payroll and that kind of stuff to maybe just expand on or reiterate what's previously been said about why we need to come every year. And we have been coming every year to increase the amount of money that's collected by the school district on our behalf to run. It's because every year, there's something more. Everything goes up. Cost of living goes up. And we're lucky in that our library is very successful and well-received in the town, and we've had increases in all of our usage. It's a beautiful building, but it's a 150-year-old building, and so we have those normal operating expenses that everybody else has to make sure that it's in good repair, that we have enough energy, utilities are paid, those go up. We clear the snow, we, you know, rake the lawns, those type of things. So we're asking to exceed the tax cap this year. Last year, we did not. Under the same pressures with minimum wage, we have the similar type of thing. A nice 15-year-old person coming in as a page for us is going to make, you know, minimum wage. We're at about 23 percent of the full 38 percent that we're going to be required to be at as a, you know, organization that's not private. So we have that same type of compression. So some of this is going to help pay for the salaries. We do pay healthcare. We actually contribute 75 percent of our, to staff that are actually accepting the healthcare through us. We pay 75 percent of that, and they contribute 25 percent of their own money into that pool. So those things go up. I feel like I'm just saying the same thing that everybody else has been saying. So why is this a good expense? So it's going to be a 4.5 percent increase for us, because we did need to increase beyond the cap this year. Okay. That's about $16,000, a little bit more than $16,000. It is on the vote, the ballot. We've been very successful and proud that we are a hub in the community. We are sometimes the only place that somebody can connect to the Internet. They use our public-use PCs. They go in, they do gaming. We appeal from preschool for early education all the way to our seniors. We reach out and have home delivery for people who are housebound. We have braille and visual aiding for people who cannot read, see, that type of thing. So we're trying to, like, encompass everything, we're continuing education, information to everybody in the area. As she has said, sorry, Erica, okay. We receive a portion of the funding through the collection of the Red Hook taxes, which is the 414 referendum, and we have not sought to increase that. We feel that it's most equitable because of the school district and because of our association, and more and more, as we are partnering with the school district and with Bard, to make sure that we reach out to as many of our community as possible, that that's the most equitable way for us to increase the funding, is that it's more equitably amongst the school district. So what we're asking is about $3.25 per increase per a 250,000 appraised value property. Combined, that'll be $85 per household with the 414 money and the money from the central school district. We have, our budget is posted. We posted it on, and it's publicly there. You can see what it is. In comparison to the $16,400, we did an audit this year, or we audited 2017, and just in comparison, the audit cost $8,000. So, you know, things cost money. We want to be well-managed. We want to be fiscally transparent, and we want to make sure that we can continue to serve our public, who are coming to us and really enjoying all the benefits of having this in our community. So I did do a small handout. We're really fiscally responsible. It's a tiny little printout. It does tell you some of our numbers. I'm just going to say that we shared almost 80,000 items. That's 1,000 items up from last year. Our Wi-Fi usage is up 30 percent. We had more than 6,000 reference items or questions answered. Our visits were 85,686. That's up 6 percent, and that's on par with larger libraries like Beacon. Our teen circulation is up 15 percent. We did summer programs. We did pop-ups for our community, realizing that some people can't just return. We actually gave away 1,386 books to families in around the area at the ice cream stand over at the rec park. Just gave them the books for the summer, because we knew that they possibly would not be able to return for some transition in the area. Don, did you have anything to add?
No. I mean, I always like to say that we feel that we've been good stewards of the public trust and the public money. We don't come out asking for money lightly. We are owners and operators in the town and village as well, and keep trusting us, and we'll keep doing right by the community.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any board questions? Maybe before we let the whole group leave, anybody in the audience have a question? All right, so May 21 is the date we have to keep in mind.
And June 18. Pardon me? June 18, is that special vote to accept the $600,000 grant? And on the solar, if I understood you, but just to repeat, so if you don't get the NIPA and other education department funding...
If you don't get the aid from the State Education Department, then we'll put the project on hold until we can get that aid, just because...
And who can do that? The board can do that? The board can vote that way, or who?
Just to not move it forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably...
And when will that be finalized? When will you know about the...
I'm hoping that within the next two months, we get someone in, maybe tomorrow. They're actually sort of a unique arrangement, the way that the project is designed. So SED told us they're going to their legal department to see if they can, I think there's a willing, an interest in helping this work out, but they have to consult their legal department to see if they can drive it. It's curious that you guys, the details, it really is interesting, and like, the wire goes through the meter this way, why... department to see if they can drive it. It's curious that you guys, the details really is interesting, and like the wire, you know, wire goes through the meter this way, one, there's a credit back, but from a different meter, and there's a difference there, and so it's a complicated sort of interesting thing to think about. We have a little diagram, we kind of call it our silly diagram, the diagram, you wire it one way, you get aid, if you wire it the other way, you don't, you know, kind of silly thing. I know the same. So, we're hopeful to work this through.
Well, thanks all of you for coming, and we'll get the word out on Panda, and it educates us too. You all do great work, thanks. Okay. So, let's see. So, we opened up with the pledge, why don't we do the minutes so we can move to the public hearing? We had meetings on April eighth, April eighteenth, and May second. In your packets are minutes of each, they've been circulated, I reviewed them, and I would ask, are there any other additions, alterations, or corrections? Hearing none, will we accept those three sets of minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So, in the April eighth minutes, we did pass a resolution to do a public hearing, and in your packets, you should have a draft version of some modifications to the sewer use law. Let me just call something up on my screens here. What we did, we said, tonight we would do a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the village sewer law. We read it and said it for tonight, and at that April eighth meeting, we did have paper versions for you all. They're back in your packets. We did circulate another setting digitally about two weeks ago. I have mine in front of me, and I could just generally describe things and see if there's any public comment, but like you all know, there's, I think it's forty-seven or sixty-seven pages of document in our current village code that we adopted about a year, eighteen months ago. And as we get closer to actually operating and looking at what we need to do, we're at a point where we can refine some of the pieces of it. What we have is, it's two, two and a half pages of text here in front of you, if you have that in front of you. Brent could chip in too, but what we're essentially trying to do is reaffirm that the service area is a given described sector of the village, essentially the general business district and areas immediately touching it. And that's called the service area of the POTW, which is the first change there, we're looking to do a definition, we're making it, the portion of the village is defined by resolution of the village board as having available sewer service. One thing we're doing is we're trying to take an active, a more active stance where we can get involved if we're modifying something, but it's also to do with the fact that we're trying to reassert further in the documents here that if folks don't connect, there is a requirement in the law to, if you're in that service area, to, to connect. And further on, you'll see some text that if you don't connect, for whatever reason, you have the liability of addressing would be certainly the capital costs, because as you know, we have a fixed amount, we have to borrow to build this thing, and it depends on the contribution of everybody, every property served or within the ability to be served of that district or that service area. So that's some of the first points there, we're defining it. And if you look at section one forty-five thirteen, we're asserting that the owners of all houses, buildings, or properties used for human occupancy, employment, recreation, or other purposes situated within, there's that word again, service area of the POTW, is hereby required at the owner's expense to connect such facilities in accordance with provisions of this chapter within ninety days after official notice to do so. What that's going to is the fact that our program is funding and taking really every expense at the cost of the project to install, repair, property conditions, and in phase one, our goal has always been that the particular owner would have no cost. But then later, and those that don't join, we can't afford that same broad financial coverage for them. They can't sit and say no and then expect later on to get the benefit of the project cost coverages. So we're working that angle. We're essentially trying to clarify the district and who's bearing the costs for it. What we want to repeat too is that this is designed and from day one, it's not an overall village taxpayer-funded project, it's only those that are benefited by the project that have to pay into it, and some of the other wording reasserts or clarifies that. On the second page of it all, section one four-five dash one-one-six goes into, all persons discharging or depositing waste into the sewers shall pay a sewer, sewer service charge proportional to the liquid volume of waste so deposited. And as the board would remember, by research and multiple data studies, we found, we're using a benefit unit, if a property is using units divided by a hundred and fifty gallons per day, meaning we measure their water, divide it by a hundred and fifty gallons, and that's the benefit units for any one property. We're reasserting that, but eventually we will move off and be, we'll have to, once we get into the project and get the capital and the operating costs formed up, it'll eventually flex to how much water you use, but the first early stages, we have to be able to pay both the capital and the operating costs. One thing I want to point on, page two, on section one forty-five, one-one-six dot one, capital costs, I think we all can handwrite this on our own copies and incorporate it with what we do later, but it says right now, additionally, all properties within the active service area benefited by the sewage system. That is not proper wording, I think it should say additionally, all properties within the service area of the POTW benefited by the sewage system. The word active is, doesn't make any sense to me, so. And we visit toward the end there, surcharge for abnormal sewage. Our current code, code has something in it where we don't want people depositing chemicals and unheard-of things that our plant can't treat. This is just reasserting some of that. That's an overview, but if we look at the code itself, it's already incorporated into our village books, and these sections within it are changing, very small sections within the existing code. Anyway, I would open up to public comment, it's rather arcane or mundane, a lot of it, but it's mainly trying to say we're offering this grant-funded and long-term, low-interest-funded project, but the offer's not on the table forever, and we also are fine-tuning some more operational aspects as we think, as we get closer to being actually operating a system. Brent, any other thoughts, input?
I'm thinking about it.
Yeah. And we'd open it up to public for a minute.
Glad I'm not in it.
Ah, you wish you were.
Well, I'm glad I'm not.
Is that your comment? That's Mr. George Beekman, by the way. Anyway, I would move that we close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's move into the regular stuff. But let me put this somewhere I can find it later tonight. All right, let's see. Today, like we said at the opening, is May, which is the last month of our fiscal year. And that being said, in our packets, treasurer has provided a report, which I can read if the treasurer so wishes.
Sure.
Do you prefer to, or want me to? This looks like it's as of May thirteenth, so that's what's moving and happening and our checking and balances.
Very happy with balances.
Like that. You might want to pull that, so we can hear that everywhere, but, so May thirteenth, I think we have three days, September, April, June, I know it says thirty-one in this month, so what's that, eighteen to go? Maybe two pay periods, one pay period? Okay. So what the treasurer is telling us, as of tonight, or sometime today, I guess, the general fund account balance was three hundred fifty-nine thousand one hundred forty-four dollars, water fund had two hundred and seven thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars, trust and agency had thirty-two thousand four hundred ninety dollars, materials management nine hundred five dollars, I have to put the cents in there, twenty-three cents, so it's important to that small amount of money. Petty cash fifty-one dollars sixty-one cents, hills green four thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars, hardscrabble one thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars, health insurance eight thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars, sewer fund ten thousand one hundred twenty dollars, capital project zero. As far as expenses, the vouchers are moving up and down, I think the people on my left side, Brent and I signed, we had to get them down to Jay probably. General fund expenses for the month are one hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars eighty-two cents. Water fund, looks like a little month in water, twenty-eight thousand seven twenty-five and fifty cents. Trust and agency thirty-two thousand four hundred ninety dollars and twenty-two cents. Materials management two thousand twenty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Sewer had moved nine thousand five hundred dollars, and one might wonder, why do we spend money in sewer? But believe it or not, these delays are starting to hit us a little bit, it's, some basis that we're trying to do later too is, even though we have zero percent interest from EFC, there are some principal payments we have to make. What that means is, they're not killer, but that ninety-five hundred dollars is for the money we've transacted so far in the two years we've been working and real, actual spending money on it. We're actually starting to have to pay money, and we don't have a cash flow yet, so it's a bit of a balancing act there. So, that's the detail, folks. Cindy mentioned, I could hear her, but she feels that these balances are keeping us in a good position for this time in the fiscal year. I was just asking her today, are any more big revenue streams coming in, or any more big expenses coming in?
Yeah, as usual, once everything has been, has come in and everything big has gone out.
Do we have the last invoices from the town as far as material for snow removal?
As far as I know, I can call for check.
Yeah, he asked that because I think one year we got burned a little bit, we got some late, like really late, didn't we, like July, something strange? And we, what we do when we close our books on May thirty-one, we prefer to have as much as we can in by May thirty-one, it's not possible to have everything, but the more you have, the better, so if you could ask. And, you know, we could go over certain lines that, there's certainly some things we need to tighten on individual lines. We did set our budgets for next year incorporating some of the lines that are over, expense-wise, and I think we'll have to sit with the operating managers of those departments and remind them of certain things. But it's, overall, they're getting the work done, and we just have to make sure they're staying closer to budget on a few things. That being said, I would ask that we move to accept the treasurer's report, which was just read, is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts, discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I guess I'll keep talking. Police report. We have the April data, which is just for that particular month, nothing running into May. Incidents, three hundred forty-one. Breakout on the pages show two hundred fifty-three in the village of Red Hook, eighty-three in a town of Red Hook, five in the village of Tivoli, because the uniform traffic tickets, a hundred twenty-four. Breakout, eighty-two in a village, includes seven parking tickets, and town of Red Hook was forty-two. Arrests were a total of seventeen, ten were in the village, and seven were in the town. I don't know if folks on the board have seen it, but we did get our, I call our speed trailer, it's a radar-based sign trailer system, and we have a shared purchase with the town of Red Hook on that, and our police are operating it and pulling the data off it. I haven't seen any data come through to us yet in a report form, but it's really interesting, and not only flashes your speed, but it keeps a record, like we said, it doesn't issue a ticket or take a picture or anything, but it gives us a count of how many cars go down a particular street or road, and it gives speed by bracketing, and it's always good to see, and I'm glad we finally own one, I think it shows a community that cares, and we're glad that we got that in our possession. I think that does it for the police report. As we mentioned at the last meeting, we're renewing our liability and different insurances, that's all underway. We filled out about a thirty-four-page application, but we're intending to stay with Niemer, that's our current carrier, and there aren't too many folks, and we have not found any more competitive way to save any money, and they're, they're a good company. So that's underway. Mr. Trustee Trapp, looks like you're next on the list here?
Got me scuffling here, hang on.
Oh, hold on, I'll, should I kill some time for you?
Okay. Well, the world of Dutchess County Planning Federation, we have had our first two classes, and our third is finally set, it's going to be Wednesday, May twenty-second. It's going to be at twenty-seven fifteen Route forty-four in Millbrook at the Cornell Cooperative Extension Farm and Home Center, as usual, six to eight PM. The subject is biodiversity in Dutchess County Municipal Planning for Conservation, and it's going to be presented by Gretchen Stevens, who is the Director of Biodiversity Resources Center for Hudsonia. So, should be an interesting one. I encourage everybody to come out, the routine is the same, five bucks per person, we feed you, we train you, you get some credits, and, and you go away hopefully with a little more knowledge in how to help your community. And on the other side of that, and the village of Red Hook Building Department, we have had, let's see, six building permits issued, one CO, two certificates, four certificates of compliance, two municipal searches, two orders to remedy were issued, two fire inspections were conducted, six in total altogether. Let me see here, planning board, April eleven, one-year extension granted to site plan approval, and a sign approval was their second item of business, and the ZBA, April twenty-five, let's see, public hearing held for property forty, Garden Street, and two area variances were granted. You guys had some fun, huh? Good for you. It's, we'll see if we can drum up some more business for you out here. I couldn't, I didn't have the, the money sheet.
Oh yeah? I have it, I can hand it out to you if you want.
Oh, cool.
Twelve sixty-nine, it's not attached to here?
Ah, here we go. And tendered in April, twelve hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So, we're doing okay, I think the adjustments we made to the, to the fee schedule sometime back are starting to pay off, it's looking a little better there, so we're hanging in there. The zoning revisions committee has been, we've been doing our thing, we, we're making some progress, it's, it's a lot of, lot of plates spinning here. I mean, when you sort of begin to take apart one piece, then it sort of exposes other things that you need to address as well. So, Ray Toll and Brent and myself have really been pushing a bit on this, we're making some progress, we're gonna, I'm sure Brent will talk a little more, but we're gonna try and give it to the board in pieces so that we can begin to get pieces of it adopted and then layer it in, kind of, you can tell I haven't had supper, I'm gonna layer it in like lasagna, so there we go. And I think that's about it, Brent will mention more about that a little later, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
Let's see, we go to Ms. Norris, you want to talk to us about material management and entertainment?
I would love to. Okay. We actually had a beautiful apple blossom day. I think it was like the first one in three or four years that it didn't rain. It was like the only sunny day I think we've had in three weeks, so... Everyone was out, it was just, it was a beautiful, beautiful day. So that's, um, David Wright and the Red Hook Rotary put that on, and yeah, it was an awesome day. The Memorial Day Parade is going to be Monday, May twenty-seventh at ten A.M. Lineup will be at nine fifteen at the high school. Do you happen to know the route?
It is what they now call the Short Route, which is West Market, left turn on North Broadway to Memorial Park.
Good. I know the fire department is gearing up for their, their big event. They have a hundredth anniversary coming up. It's a weekend event, August sixteenth and seventeenth. It's also, Tivoli is getting involved in that as well. I'm not sure.
Yeah, they turn a hundred too, so.
Hundred as well.
Not a hundred and two, a hundred as well.
Hundred as well. I believe there's going to be food trucks and activities for kids and music and.
Fireworks.
Fireworks and all sorts of stuff. And we are starting slowly but surely to, like, we looked at the calendar, we're like, oh yeah, Hardscrabble Day. So that's Saturday, September twenty-first. So we're working on updating our website and getting the forums together to be a vendor and looking for music and all that good stuff. Before I swing to materials management, there's a food drive, June eleventh, from three to seven at the Red Hook Community Center. For Red Hook Central School District families who are not able to, or they depend on the food service department to feed their children breakfast and lunch during the school year, but obviously don't have that during the summer months. So they're doing a food drive for that, suggested food dri-, uh, sorry, suggested food items, cereal, oatmeal, tuna, canned goods, popcorn, pancake mix, that sort of thing. Again, that's June eleventh from three to seven at the Red Hook Community Center. And now what everyone's been waiting for, materials management. For the month of April, we sold two thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars in garbage tags and paid out one thousand, twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. As a reminder, we do not pay for recycling anymore because we do separate it. We had nine point five ton, nine point five tons of garbage. Two point eight one tons of paper slash cardboard and one point three three tons of co-mingled. As we've said every time, recycling is a global problem now. Many of the larger waste companies also having issues. We're not exactly sure where their recycling goes, but we know that we are recycling. We are alternating paper and cardboard, which must be separated with co-mingled, so it's every other week. We're also in the middle of our annual spring cleaning tag sale. When you buy ten of one color, you get one free, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Jen. I think what Jen read about the community center food drive, we were going to put a poster up in our village hall. I don't know if that went to Ari for printing or Cindy, but it seemed like a good cause, and we could work with that. And then back to the infamous changes in recycling world. I do hear from our regulars who love our system still, and they've offered to come in and promote, you know, the quietness of our trucks and the fact that we are recycling. Another deputy mayor works just out of state, and he's got some pretty direct information. He thinks some of the major carriers are just, uh, lumping what's in a recycling bin with a garbage bin and going off to dump it. I don't know how they can afford it, because for us, regular garbage is a hundred and three dollars a ton, whereas our recycling is free, so they therefore have to be paying a hundred and three dollars for the combined load, which somehow. Something's gonna break.
And they're basically blaming it on that the recycling is contaminated. So a lot of pizza boxes, which they don't accept, and plastics with, plastic bottles with liquids still in them. And so the recovery agencies will not accept those. They'll take them as contaminated, which they'll charge at the same rate. So I don't know how they're balancing either, but they're not even looking into recycling. And I asked them directly, because I see them doing so.
Yeah, he sees it happens, but we still do and we still will. So come back to us if you're watching, and we're cheaper. We can get it done cheaper. Thanks, Jen. I know we have one of our engineers sitting out there. Do you mind hanging, or do you want to get somewhere? Yeah, because we have, um, as Robert fully knows, we go through some of the shorter reports. Then we get to Deputy Mayor Kavatchak, who runs a lot of data bias, which is all important. But can you say a little bit, because, thank you. Let's see, I think we'll move to water, which is something we'll be talking about later on tonight too. But Mr. Lang, are you ready to work over there?
Yes, absolutely. So system flow during the month of April. The water treatment facility treated six million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred total gallons for an average of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred gallons a day. I have a little, um, annual daily average flow chart here, and that's, that's pretty much in keeping with the, the flow through the year. As we regularly do, three, uh, bacteriological samples were collected and transported to Smith Environmental Lab, and they all came back clean, as in absent of bacteriological contamination, so that's always good. Chemical usage during the month of April, the water treatment plant used fifty-five gallons of sodium hypochlorite, and that's an average daily use of one point eight three gallons per day. And that seems to be fairly steady, staying at or below two gallons a day there. Otherwise, there's, you know, a steady list of open work orders and issues that continue to need addressing, such as the elevated storage tank and the SCADA system and responding to the D.O.H. inspection. I know we're trying to make strides in addressing some of these open work orders and.
Okay.
Ongoing system issues.
Yeah, actually, Robert's firm is working with V.R.I. on some of those.
Right.
Readdressing them. One thing, just maybe the board can help me pitch, and maybe the public might be interested. As we all know, we sell water, and we would like to reduce the consumption of water because A, it would save people money in your house, and B, it would reduce the demand of us pulling and pumping and chlorinating and all that. So just working up an idea with using local plumbers and local supply houses to create some sort of a incentive to have folks replace existing toilets, existing showerheads and different things in your house with low-flush, low-water-consumption heads. Some, trying to reach out to Plinton Hills and Williams Lumber to see if we can get them to throw in, and then get the five or seven really truly local plumbers to throw some sort of discount. Something where they could get more customers, and we don't want to skin them alive, you know, we don't want them to give up a big, big discount or anything, but, uh, something where we could promote it, and it wouldn't have to happen in a month or two, but I'd like to try to get it, maybe so it could be placed in our June water newsletter. So if anybody has any input or thoughts, but I think it'd be a win-win all around. It would help the local contractor economy, the sales at the two real local, Williams and Plinton Hills. And then, um, it would help the customer with theoretically reduced water bill. Granted, you'd have to have the, the cost of construction, whatever, to buy the, the units and put them in, but if we could make it happen, it'd be a fun project, so working on that. And Charlie, I think your other hat is your, uh, the one active thing we're working on is an LED streetlight project. When the school was talking about Niipa and the solar thing going forward, backward, and forward, backward, it seemed like we're still in that situation. I know lately I wrote to Niipa saying, where's the maintenance piece of the, the shared contract? And unless we saw Charlie, but it's not in place yet, so.
Right, and that's, so we have yet to see that.
Yeah, so we're loathe to go change all our streetlights and then have nobody to service slash maintain them. And if you notice, Central Hudson, to their credit, I guess, is switching us to more LEDs than ever. But, uh, I'm just wondering what that does to that stranded cost number that we projected.
Well, it goes up every, every LED light fixture they put in.
Yeah, so it's, um, but anyway, we're still working on that. So it looks like we've hit that point where, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor Kavatchak's got to go to work. Are you ready?
Ready, I am, sir. Start with the Village Green Committee's monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community bidification, we're in negative six hundred and one dollar and forty cents. Shade tree contractual, we're also negative six dollars and thirty cents. And our checking account is four thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. And that includes the hundred and seventy-five deduction, ninety-seven-five-dollar deduction for the St. Christopher's Tree Removal Project on Bennett Road. And this enabled us to plant eight trees there, so it was a good investment. We were, during the week of April twentieth through April twenty-sixth, we are very busy making preparations for our annual spring planting. Various members located tree sites called New York Dig Safely dug the holes in our highway department, actually on the twenty-sixth, the Friday before, delivered trees and mulch to the planting sites. The two thousand nineteen annual spring planting and Arbor Day celebration was held on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. I had the great honor of welcoming twelve volunteers, and including some people from Bard College helped us out, which they do every year, every planting season. And I read the Arbor Day proclamation. We took photos of, and did team assignments. And at the village municipal parking lot, fifteen trees were planted at sites located on Old Post Road, Fraley Street, Church Street, West Market Street, and Bennett Road. A memorial tree in memory of the Village Green Committee volunteer and friend of the Village of Red Hook, Les Kegel, was planted in Richard Abraham's Memorial Park by the Kegel family. And Arbor Day celebrations continued after planting at the Red Hook Town Hall, where members and volunteers of the Village Green Committee and the Town Tree Commission shared a lunch and activities. The Village Green Committee wishes to thank all the volunteers, and especially Michelle Decker, who helped dig our, our holes for us, and the Village Highway Department and the Red Hook Town Tree Commission for all of the help and assistance that they made to make the two thousand nineteen annual spring planting and Arbor Day celebration a success. So it was not bad, and the weather was good, but it rained the night before, so the mud was very heavy to move. Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report. Highway department is currently picking up brush and lawn debris on every first and third Monday of the month. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris curbside and not in the road, and please limit the size of brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree branches and limbs not larger than six inches in diameter. Brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, grass, clippings, garbage, or building material debris will not be picked up. And the highway swept, highway department swept village streets during the week of May sixth. And the highway department will be repaving portions of Kent Road and Cambridge Drive after June two thousand nineteen. Approximately seventy thousand dollar project cost will be deducted from the maintenance of streets, budget line in the general fund and the CHIPS general fund budget lines. And no revenue was generated from the sale of scrap metal during the month of April. I think we had one, we'll have one more bill come in before the close of this fiscal year, but currently we've generated two thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents from the sale of scrap metal. Since we started the program back in two thousand and seven, we've generated twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and forty-seven cents. And the proceeds for this go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway, materials management, and water departments. And anyone interested in donating scrap metal, be it a business or a resident, can contact the village clerk's office or the highway department at seven five eight eight six hundred, and we will gladly assist in picking it up, the scrap metal for you as well. The intermunicipal task force and Red Hook Infrastructure monthly report. Start with the Red Hook Sewer Project. Meetings were held, as they always are, on Fridays. We met this month on April fifth, twelfth, and twenty-sixth in the Red Hook Village Building. We discussed, reviewed, revised sections of the sewer use law, which we just had a public hearing on, and will be making the determination on its adoption. Later this evening, we reviewed and recapped the meeting regarding the Dutchess County Regulatory Review of the Red Hook Sewer Project of April third. At the offices of Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, we had our representatives with us from C.T. Mail, Department of Health officials was there as well, as long as, and the assistant Dutchess County Executive, and Ed Bundell attended as well. We reviewed and discussed and responded to comments by the Dutchess County Department of Health of April ninth. A response along with attachments from Orinco Systems was forwarded by C.T. Mail to the D.O.H. on May second. And additional comments from the D.O.H. are expected, and responses to those comments will be further addressed by the Village of Red Hook. Those were sent out Friday, I believe. And we discussed protocol and procedures to obtain the New York State D.E.C., U.S.D.A.R.D. approvals after final approval by Dutchess County D.O.H. We have had conversations with the county executive's office regarding our, I guess, concern about the, the time it's taking for the D.O.H. to review our, our applications. And we reviewed property assessments and amounts of additional offerings for the eminent domain proceedings regarding easements associated with the project. Still, three properties remain without submitting their easements. Thirty-four East Market, twenty-three, twenty-five East Market, and sixty-four, sixty-six East Market. They have not submitted their easements as well. The Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two, a meeting was held on April twenty-sixth, and we met with engineers from Delaware Engineering, and we discussed procedures to decommission the Tower Street Elevated Storage Tank, and reviewed correspondences from the manager of the Town of Red Hook Water District, our water operator, representatives from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority regarding the town and village water system interconnection and the Red Hook Village controls. A scheduled test to remove the Tower Street Elevated Tank from the village's water distribution system has been scheduled for May eighteenth of this year. I believe that's a Saturday. So we hope that runs successfully. The South Broadway, Old Farm Road Water Bane Loop Project, we'll be delving into that further as well. We've been meeting with some of the property owners who are actually funding this project. And we met on April fifth, twelfth, and sixteenth in the village building. We discussed installation procedures, contractors, and costs to connect the Red Hook Village dead-end water mains at Old Post Road and South Broadway in the Town of Red Hook. By connecting these dead-end water mains, the loop will provide for more efficient, safer, and more easily repaired water distribution service to properties along Old Farm Road and South Broadway north of M&amp;T Bank. And the costs associated with the project will be paid for by private property owners benefiting from the village water connection. And the Village of Red Hook will be providing oversight and providing the permitting for the project. The community solar project, which is our subject for our next meeting on Thursday, the fifteenth. A meeting was held on April twenty-sixth in the village building with representatives from Delaware Engineering and Tyne Bond Engineering, which are the towns' engineers, to review the documents relating to SEAKER Part One, the SEAKER, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act lead agency, the public hearing and public comments that we've heard about so far. The project located on the Red Hook Village Firehouse Lane Well Field Site in the Town of Red Hook will contain approximately nine acres of PV solar panels and provide energy at a reduced rate for Red Hook Town, Red Hook Village, and village of Tivoli municipally-owned buildings and facilities. And will also provide energy at reduced costs for residents who choose to sign up for this program. And there will be a marketing campaign, I believe, after things are set. Again, the public hearing is set for May sixteenth, sorry, at seven o'clock P.M. at the village building to go over SEAKER and the.
Monroe process.
Monroe balancing test. On the task force side, well, Charlie and I sit as members representing the Village of Red Hook. We met on April twelfth and fourteenth at the town hall, and also met with Michelle Gregg, who is the town planner to review proposed draft regulations, including the annual operating permit for short-term rentals. Discussions continue regarding permitted short-term rentals in certain town, Red Hook Town zoning districts, hosted and non-hosted primary dwellings, number of rooms. zoning districts, hosted and non-hosted primary dwellings, number of rooms permitted to be rented, and possible regulations should be enacted with respect to short-term rentals in the town. And the goal is to propose the adoption by the Red Hook Town Board of a balanced and reasonable regulation governing short-term rentals that allows citizens to share the economic benefit of their property while protecting and preserving neighborhood character and long-term housing availability. We've been going on reviewing this for, it's been over a year, Charlie, right?
I guess it must be.
Yeah. Some of the other quickly reports, some of the committees. There were no meetings of the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, which I am a member of. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, we met on April twenty-second. The CPF Advisory Board reviewed and considered a recommendation to the Red Hook Town Board to add four properties and one correction to an existing parcel to the community preservation project plan. There were three parcels in the village that comprised the St. Sylvia's lands. These parcels receive points due to their inclusion in three categories, including scenic features, trails, and gateways, historic values, and village or village-enhancing areas. A fourth parcel that provides a potential trail access from Aspen Wall Road to an eighty-nine-acre Amigable Rowley property. And another parcel, which is the eighty-nine-acre Amigable Rowley property, had an incorrect tax ID number in the two thousand sixteen project plan, which has now been corrected. And the Town Board did consider these recommendations and voted to amend it on April twenty-fourth. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of April thirtieth is one million four hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents. There were no Salt Hill Watershed Community Meetings in April, and no Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee member, committee meetings. The Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program or the LWRP Working Group, which I'm also a member of, met on April twenty-third, and we reviewed the status of the LWRP Working Group project. We expect completion by December of two thousand twenty. We reviewed the maps to be updated, and the boundaries and land use maps, wildlife management maps, and tried to achieve the goals of the MWBE, which is a minority and women-owned business enterprise. We reviewed Section Two on transportation, which included highways, roads, and streets, and also reviewed Section One, the waterfront revitalization area boundary. And then, as Jay had mentioned, the Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, Jay, Ray Towel, and myself are members of that. We met on April fourteenth and twenty-seventh in the Village Building. We are proposing to extend the General Business District East along East Market Street to include properties currently in the R ten thousand in highway business districts. We reviewed, revised, and proposed amendment to definitions as they pertain to the General Business District. And it seems like we're meeting every week now, so I think we're picking up the pace. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Brent. Let's see. As Brent was reading, one of the things he touched on was on this page that starts with Intermunicipal Task Force down the bottom, Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two. And he does mean Phase Two. We've been working, trying to get that elevated tank done, which was part of the Phase Two, meaning done means it's no longer providing the gravity pressure, and we'll work off pump ground-based pressure from our land-based pumping facilities on Firehouse Lane. Robert's out in the audience, and we are trying to push to get something done on May eighteenth. The board's familiar with it. It's been this odd coincidence of the software that drives a lot of the pumps and makes them smart in their operations, and tuning that up to what we actually need, and taking the elevated tank offline. It's sort of a, it's like a rocket launch to me almost. It's like all these things have to be timed out just right. I'm not sure the eighteenth, maybe Robert might have some input. We're trying to use that as a scheduled test date, but it was, we did need the town's cooperation a little bit to open up an interconnect and different things. So we run at about, right now, sixty-eight, seventy pounds per square inch pressure. The town, I think, is at, what, sixty-ish? And when we're doing the test, if we have that interconnect open, our engineers feel we'll be better able to protect against any low-pressure events, and they can watch things happen. I saw people posted at the well pumps, at the elevated tank, different places to observe how our system's performing, and see if it's ready to go live on it, so on or not. So is the eighteenth still holding up, or do we, as far as you know?
Yeah.
Okay. And what does that mean? We're doing it on a Saturday on purpose, in that people aren't getting up early in the morning and have to shower and get to work, you know, the regular folks, and you're picking like ten or eleven, is it here sometime? Are you picking your time later in the morning?
I think we're gonna get started at ten.
Yeah.
And it might take an hour or two to actually fill the valves.
Yeah. So those watching us on Panda, you might notice a little change in pressure, but we'll be on it, we'll be watching it, and it's planned. So it's not a breakdown of the system, it's a planned operational review, so that's a good thing. So we're kind of excited that on or about sometime after that, I guess, if the tests work, we'll be more inclined to pull it right off. And it is a condition, and it's one reason we did Phase Two water, so we gotta get the elevated tank offline.
The follow-up to that would be to modify the immersive agreement with the town.
Yeah. Robert, do you feel like grabbing the microphone there? You can stay in your seat, but just, what Robert just mentioned is the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook in nineteen ninety-one?
One, I think ninety-one.
Signed a thirty-year shared interconnect agreement. What that means is, I think it was originally designed in drought years to give one the benefit of another's water source if there was a problem. And there's a lot of engineering that makes it all happen. And in Phase Two, we did upgrade the interconnect and some valves and so forth. We would like to have it, that the interconnect is always open. Right now, I'm not sure the town totally agrees with that.
Well, so the IME, as was written in ninety-one, specifically says that it would only be open prior notification. So with that interpretation, and I see where the town's coming from, the valves can't stay open, so the IME has to be modified to allow the valves to be open on a normal basis, and then only pressure would open the check valve. A drop in pressure would open the check valve.
A drop on our side?
Right.
How about a drop on their side?
A drop on their, the valves, the village system is at a higher pressure than the town. That's because the village water tank is taller than the water tank in the town, right? So water can only flow from the village to the town. So the valves were, there's an interconnect, but water flows both directions, and each direction has a water meter. So if the valves that send the water from the village to the town were open, the water from the village would always go to the town, because your pressure's higher, right? So those valves stay closed. However, if for some reason, something bad happened on the town side, you could open the valves and provide water to them. They obviously have an elevated tank, which provides, I think, more than three days of storage. So there's really no reason to have a standby-ready system.
For them.
For the village to feed the town, right? But on the other side, again, since your water is higher than their water, the town cannot feed water to the village unless the pressure in the village drops. So by having a check valve, which is a valve that only allows water to flow in one direction, so that was installed as part of Phase Two. However, this one-way valve doesn't work currently because, I mean, it works, it's just it's isolated by valves that are closed, right? So we need to modify the intermunicipal agreement so that the town will open the valves and, the correct, open the correct valves and keep them open.
But on the eighteenth, you can do it like a one-off kind of a test. You don't need the agreement by the eighteenth.
Right, because we gave notice, they agreed to it, and we're gonna open the valves.
So when we decommission the tank, we won't have a higher storage tank than the town. We will be activated solely on pumps.
But you'd be solely on pumps, but the pumps are set to operate at a similar elevation as the height of the water of the tank.
So to provide the same amount of pressure that we're currently receiving from the elevated tank?
Right.
Could it just be done in a different manner?
So if the system's operating on normal conditions, again, everybody in the village will have the same pressure, which means you'll always have higher pressure than the town, so water can't flow from the town to the village.
So if there's a catastrophic drop in pressure on the village side, we will have the emergency benefit of the interconnect valve, which we would receive water from the town on a limited basis until we rectify our own problem, and then we'll go back to normal usage and flow.
Right. And the...
An insurance policy that we would have.
Right, that's exactly what it is. It was connected, and the intermunicipal agreement specifies up to how many gallons per day you can provide the village, and up to how many gallons per day a town can provide the village. Both numbers are enough to provide a hundred percent of the flow, actually, which is still true.
It'll give us enough time to fix whatever problem on either side would occur.
Right, so it's a very good benefit, but it would be even more beneficial if it could be done automatically.
So this is something that will be activated during our tests in case there is some issue that comes up. You know, we'll have a backup, and the residents will receive pressure, you know, regardless if the system doesn't operate as planned. So again, it's our insurance policy that we still have water and water pressure to the village residents, so.
Right, the drop in pressure that we're talking about is somewhere around ten PSI, based on the way the pressure's currently being read. And it's hardly unlikely that anybody would notice that. But you could, you know, especially if you were up on the third floor or something like that. But that's the other reason for the test is, if somebody does, you know, if we notice that somebody, a particular part of the village has a problem, then we can investigate why. Now, the other part of this, the reason why we can do the tests is, we did some modifications to the controls, so that, you know, they can work without, with the elevated tank being offline, which we'll, you know, also do on Saturday.
So the engineers are working with our VRI, the operator, and so forth, it's all better?
Right, yep.
All right, while we have him with the mic, let's see, we don't need to vote on that, that's just to clarify for all of us what's happening on the eighteenth. In the agenda world, let's see. As Brent was reporting, the last bullet item on the agenda for tonight, we had SEACER Water Loop. In your packets, you have some documents that Delaware completed for us. I'd like to move ahead on that a little bit here now, let's see. And tonight, you also did get what we'll call a blanket resolution to deal with it. Like Brent said, it's been a long-term plan. We're selling water to Hoffman Farms that's under construction now, and they are in contract with us in the Dutchess County Waste Water Authority. That's how we're gonna be providing water to them. We sell to a master meter for a rate, one point five two five times our rate. They do all repairs behind the master meter, they read all meters, bill all customers, they do everything behind that master meter. Then further down the road, the town has created TND, Traditional Neighborhood Design Zoning, Centers of Greenspace related. But we have two dead ends. When we take the water, we're grabbing it from Cambridge and Red Hook Estates and pushing it into the new project, and then we have a dead end. Brent mentioned M&amp;T Bank around there. It's just a little bit below Metzger Road. We have a fire hydrant and a stub. And dead ends and water systems aren't the best scenarios, so we've been talking with some potential other developers down there, and working out water sale contracts with them. One is the building that burned down, the Ross Brothers Own, and they're in front of Town Planning Board to do some mixed use, probably retail and residential project there on their corner. And then Bayrite has no specific plans at the moment, but they would like access to water if and when they need it. So the plan is to put a loop process. It's a two-hundred-and-ninety-foot, ninety-nine-foot run south on the east side of Route Nine, cross Route Nine to get to the Ross property and tie into what Hoffman's building down Old Farm Road. And like we said many times, we're way better served than a loop. And plus, if there were ever a break on something in Cambridge, Red Hook Estates, the whole hundred unit and built, final build development would have trouble, because we'd be having to fix the sole source of supply. But with a loop, it'll just, the water will find its way in from the other, the Route Nine side of the world. The good part is, like Brent said, we've convinced those folks that they will handle engineering, legal, construction, and all costs. Our involvement would be that we would take one of the perm thirty-three type numbers, where it's a thirty-three, that might not be the right number, but to do a directional drill under the Route Nine Highway, but the drill cost, the bore cost, the pipe cost will be borne by those same folks. But in the course of discussing it, one of our Friday sessions was like, we probably should do a SEACER on this, and we're calling it a water main connection. Just so the board knows and the public knows, the three customers we're talking about are already within our DEC-approved supply capacity. What that means is they're named in our water agreement, our water supply documents as the three entities, the Ross Project, Bayrite is actually known as Hartsville Plaza, I think it's called down there, and Hoffman is also approved, they've been long-approved. Jay and I were talking about it a little bit. Hoffman did a SEACER for their whole project, which included the water, Jay?
Yes.
So we felt it wasn't broad enough to pick us up. So we have these papers here, as you can see, one is the short form, and one is the Short Environmental Assessment Form, Part Two, Impact Assessment. I thought, as a group, we should go through them, just be sure we concur on the answers there, and then, well, Robert's still here, if anybody had any questions, we could run it by him. But then I did prepare a resolution where I'm trying to incorporate, if it's a go that we're saying we want to take lead agency, as sort of a one-stop-shopping resolution, where we accept lead agency, concur that it's an enlisted action, and then move ahead to authorize us to sign and go ahead, we could read that. But Jay, I don't know if you wanted to jump in and look at things there, or if you had time to look it over at all?
I have looked at part two. I don't see anything there that I think is of issue.
Okay. So like I said, we're calling it Name of Action, Water Main Connection, and we described that intersection of Route Nine and Old Farm Road area. And like I said, a brief description, approximately three hundred feet of eight-inch water main that will connect two dead-end sections of the village water main. The project includes crossing Route Nine by directional drilling methods. And just so everybody knows, the developers are also using their engineers to prepare the final application to County DOH. That's supposed to happen Monday or Tuesday this week, today's Monday, as far as be ready. They're preparing it on our behalf, we'd review it, then we sign it and send it to DOH, because it's our water supply system that's being involved. And we're using our engineers in escrow format to make sure they do everything properly, too, so we're not relying on their engineers for every step of the way. Robert, in the paperwork filled out, does the proposed action require a permit, approval, or funding from any other governmental agency? If yes, he did check yes, because we do need some approvals, and they are New York State DOT for roadwork and Dutchess County DOH for approval of plans.
Has DOH already approved the connection to Traditions at Red Hook? All right, so we don't have to wait.
I think the water authority took care of all that. Let's see, one other thing where we checked a yes box, just so we're transparent here. Question seventeen, will a proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Let's see, Robert checked yes, and it says, the installation of the water main will not change the stormwater discharge. Route Nine and Old Farm Road have established conveyance systems. I don't know why we checked yes.
I can't remember how the word, the question's wording exactly, but...
I could read it.
Does it involve...
Will the stormwater discharges be directed to establish... Will the stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems?
Yeah, they will be directed towards, right.
So the pre-existing ones is what we're saying, like?
You're right, basically, it does, but nothing's gonna change.
But we're not changing it, it's just what's there, okay. Thank you, thank you, Jay.
Yeah, man.
And then, on the impact assessment form, it's essentially leading us to the decision that we can use the short form, and those of us that know, seeker, Jay, and Robert?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did we declare ourselves lead agent on this piece?
Not yet, I'm looking to just describe it, and then, what I was saying is, I was trying to formulate a one-stop-shopping resolution here, where we declare lead if you think that can be done within the body of a resolution, but also does it all at the same time. I remember trying to put it in the resolution, do you guys see it? Did you find?
Second page. It'd be the last whereas.
Okay, okay. In the world of seeker, would that fly for those that do it professionally every day? Jay, would you prefer to see it separately?
What's the order again? You got lead agency first and then review?
Yeah, but I, in our, I'll call the mother resolution, I put in the whereas is that...
Typically, it comes before, you declare lead agency, then you conduct this part, then you do a resolution, right?
Right, because the lead agency reviews the short form, so.
So we need to be lead agent before we can complete Part Two?
Yeah, what I was trying to, we can break it into two if it has to be, but, in the second page, it put, whereas on May thirteen, the Village Board of Trustees declared its intent to serve as lead agency, has considered the criteria contained in six NYCRR, and thoroughly analyzed and identified relevant areas of environmental concerns, and classified the project as an unlisted action. I was putting that up in the whereas, is trying to get that first. Then, saying that in the resolution resolved part, the Board of Trustees hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared, so.
Seems like you have it in the right order.
And then, the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to complete the forms here. Do you guys concur, or should we break?
All right with it, but.
Yeah.
All right, so I was describing for everybody, these were in front of us, the overall project makes a ton of sense, we're gonna be enhancing, improving our water system by creating loops, we're gonna reduce some exposure, if there's a break on the old line feeding that project, and then we're gonna get some new customers and open up that TND to work, and by getting new customers, that means is we can reduce the cost of our current customers because we're dividing it by more numbers, and then B, more importantly, we're not laying out the construction, the engineering, it could be, it's a pretty involved project, and when the private owners do it, they don't have to be burdened by the prevailing labor wage rules that we're burdened with, so.
This is safer, too, to have a dead end, there's a certain amount of residual that happens there, and by circulating that water, it's actually.
Yeah, because we found problems out east where, generation ago, they built that, and it was a dead end, and it's just a problem for the users out there, it's, the water can't flow, and sort of stuff out too, it just kind of packs up at the end there with a lot of particulate matter and so forth. Anyway, so I did prepare a resolution, I call it Resolution Seeker Waterloo Route Nine, Old Farm Road. Mr. Jay, would you feel like reading it to us, sir?
Number twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay. Resolution number twenty-seven, year 2019, whereas the village of Red Hook owns and maintains a municipal water systems that provides water to the village residents, town residents, and business owners, and whereas the village requires a modern infrastructure, and the village of Red Hook desires to promote ecological and economic sustainability, and whereas the village of Red Hook contracted with Duchess County Waste Water Authority to sell water to them for the Hoffman Farm Traditional Development in the town of Red Hook. Whereas this is a contiguous area, boy, contiguous area, to the existing water mains, but is also served by one older main in Red Hook Estates, and results in the creation of a dead end of a supply main, and whereas the village has also has a dead-end water main on Route Nine South, and whereas it is best practice to have fully-connected, looped water mains, and this is the best scenario for the village, its new customers and existing customers, and whereas the village of Red Hook has water supply capacity and DEC approval to sell water to Hoffman Traditional and Hardscrabble Plaza Plus, the Ross Project, that would be served by construction of a 300-foot run to form a loop along Route Nine South into Old Farm Road, and three customers who will also benefit from the loop will prorate costs, provide easements to include legal, engineering, and construction costs for the loop, and whereas the village of Red Hook will obtain via the applicant's engineers' work product approval from Duchess County Department of Health, and apply to the New York State DOT perm costs only, and whereas on May thirteen, 2019, the Village Board of Trustees declared its intent to serve as lead agency, has considered the criteria contained in six NYCRR, section six seventeen point seven, and thoroughly analyzed all identified relevant areas of environmental concern, and classified the project as an unlisted action pursuant to secret. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the village of Red Hook as follows. Number one, the Board of Trustees hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Number two, Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to complete and sign Page Two of the impact statement, Form Part Two and Page Three of the short environmental impact form.
I'm sorry, I have one little comment, I think you said the word intent to be lead agency, so the intent has to be scratched off?
Declared its intent to serve as lead agency.
Declared itself as lead agency.
Herein?
Declared to serve as lead agency.
Herein declares its intent, or?
Board of Trustees declared. Has to serve as lead agency.
It's not an intent, we're doing it.
There we go, McCoy, yep.
Yep.
Where's?
Just a couple other things, we'll wait for the discussion, I guess, for that.
Okay, we've read it, I would offer a motion, is there a second, some discussion?
Second.
For the discussion?
Just a few typos, and the first whereas, municipal water system.
Yeah, we'll take that S off, yeah.
The third whereas, the village of Red Hook contracted with Duchess County Water and Waste Water Authority.
Word and?
Yep, Water and Waste Water Authority, Hoffman Farm Tradition at Red Hook Development.
Say that part again, Brent?
Tradition at Red Hook.
Said just the word tradition, just tradition.
Same for, down to the last, whereas on the first page, same thing, and then at the last sentence, Old Farm Road, farm to be capitalized.
Which one, where's that one?
The last sentence on the first page. The rest seems okay.
And then, so the last whereas, May thirteen, the Village Board declares as lead agency?
Declares.
To serve as lead agency.
Declares to serve as lead agi... Or declared to serve as lead agency.
You seen a D at the end or an S?
Yeah, just take off its intent.
Declared, okay. Okay. Any other discussion or thoughts? So you have a motion and a second, discussion is done, we're calling it Resolution Twenty-seven to be lead agency, and then authorizing signature of the seeker forms, so we can move ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Let's see, Robert's still out there, what else we got for Robert? Let's see. Let's touch on solar array details, it was also in Brent's report, but we'll quickly, like he said, we'd expect and hope everybody from the board can be here Thursday night, we set that special meeting, just wanted to point out something we circulated today to the board, and we should put up, remember about eight years ago, the CO2 level in the atmosphere, once it exceeded 350 parts, was deemed to be a really dangerous part of climate change exposure, tests that I saw in my news feeds this morning now have, we're at 412 parts in the atmosphere of CO2, and it's like, you know, we're looking at this solar project as our way to be responsible and generate clean energy here, so we'll have folks from the town and from the village, and I think Delaware's gonna be here, and Suncom, but it's, we'll be prepared to take comment and work forward, like we said, we're like, we've got the circulation out to the involved agencies and seeker, and then we've got the Monroe process to deal with, and my gut feeling is, we would probably keep, we should keep the public hearing open until we hear from all the involved agencies, you know, we wouldn't be voting on anything Thursday night, but it'd be good if the whole board could be here. Let's see. I think we could let you go then, looks like, good to see you again.
Yep.
We haven't seen you much, now we're seeing you a lot again.
Glad to be here.
Yeah. We'll move to our more non-engineering related business, the second bullet point, fire company slash fire protection dash contract status and the vote. What I'm looking for here, folks, Jay and I sat with the town and the fire company in the December-January, I guess more December timeframe, when we were at our request, we were involved with that negotiation, and all of us might remember that they did agree, town and fire company, to do a 2%, and then the next year, 2% tax, not tax increase, I got tax cap on my mind.
That's kind of in sync with the town's increases as well, right?
Yeah, so those meetings did help, they were formative for all of us, and I think everybody realizes that we should be consistent in that form, so. I did draft a new contract, sent into Rich Olson and to Rob Frye, who is Chair of the Board of Directors at the Fire Company, who were essentially stating that we plug in the numbers, and it goes like, next year, 113,000 and change, and the year after that, 115,000 and change, rounding a little bit. We did, by our budget process, agree that we would try to mimic what the town does, we were gonna throw in a $2,500 capital reimbursement line, and we do have that in this year's budget, the next fiscal year's budget, the town throws one in at 10,000, but we're following that scene, pretty much accepted 75% slash 25% theory, so that's the base of that, and we're agreeing and concurring that we'll continue summer lawn mowing in and around the building, and then in the winter, snow plowing with some constraints where we don't get too close to the building, we don't want to hit anything on the building. But what I was looking for is the board concurrence, because technically, I'd like to try to have it signed by May 31st, which we won't have a regular meeting between now and then, so it is out to everybody, it's been submitted to them in draft form a few times, I don't know when they meet, but what I'd like to do is have some contingency support from the board, saying with the double 2%, meaning two and two for a two-year contract, a new 2,500, continuing the mowing, continuing the plowing, and then we also threw in, as you all know, we cover the low sap payments, and then we also, this year, added to our obligation to buy them fire firefire benefit well, which is workers' comp, we added that new cancer coverage, we buy that for them, and we share low sap comp coverage and cancer coverage, 75-25 with the town, it's, the town pays 75% of it, which is a fair allocation. So if you could be so inclined, I would ask that, I'll put in a form of motion that the mayor be authorized upon final review by lawyer and fire company to sign the next two-year contract with the terms I just described, essentially, the boilerplate contract doesn't change, it's just those few things that I mentioned. I would put it for just a regular motion, again, contingent on their approval, if they come back with some change that we did not anticipate or expect, I'd have to bring it back to all of you for talks and negotiations, but I'm not hearing that right now, and so I would move that, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. One lighter one, the board, we used to function pretty heavily with CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Money, I was talking with the new, well, the folks that are now active in Historic Red Hook, known to us as the Elmendorf Inn, and as we all know, they're building that central green, village green concept up there, and they would like to make it more accessible to handicapped and so forth, and I think that's the one little niche we can still claim some access to block grant money at. What they're looking at is on Cherry Street, taking the existing sidewalk on Route Nine and turning it down on their property, and which would be the border of the right-of-way in their property somewhere, a sidewalk which would bring it down toward across the front of the green, and then toward their, their new display, I forget what they're calling the second home, they have, it's like, it's in formative stages, but like I said, it did seem like something we could qualify for, because it'll be, make more handicap access to the second back building, because right now, if you walk there, you know, you have to like walk on Cherry Street, it's a little bit dicey as you get off, you have stores there, and there's a lot of action on that south corner, but we don't have to do anything tonight, and folks here on the board, we remember that most, well not most, all the block grant applications are due sometime in early October, you know, so we're not under a time constraint tonight, but they're actually looking at doing, their dream would be bluestone, I'm not sure it's feasible or available, but, and they don't quite like the sidewalk on Route Nine side, but I don't think we'd want to get involved in changing that out to more historic, it might be too much of a project for a block grant funding. Does the board have any thoughts input at this point on it?
Brent and I were just talking that, would it truly qualify, you know, it's a possibility?
Yeah, they qualify as an ADA.
As an ADA project.
Yeah.
And there are some, some other sort of peripheral language in it, Brent, about restoration or something like that of a.
Restoration of a sidewalk, right?
Yeah. So part would be new and part would be kind of a restoration, is that what we're?
Well, but, but I don't think a nice historic bluestone sidewalk would go hand-in-hand with ADA accessible requirements, I mean, at first, it would be wonderful, but the moment, you know, it got lifted a bit.
Yeah, it would have to be concrete, I would think, with all the ramps and.
Well, we could deliver that bad news to them, we're all familiar with the stockade part.
Looking for bluestone?
Well, that's what they, they're wishers and dreamers, too, you know, in other words, like Charlie and all of us know, bluestone, you get a tree root and settling and.
There were issues in Reinbeck with, with that, the fact that it was bluestone, you couldn't change it.
Right.
So you couldn't make it, in, in reality, you couldn't make it ADA compliant because there were gaps, and as Charlie said, elevation changes within the pieces, which just don't work, so, I mean.
But we could try, see what they have to say.
Does the architect have, we'll do two more minutes on it, but can you make a concrete bed and then lay a veneer?
Yeah, you can do a setting bed and keep it pretty level, but, you know, even a sidewalk will be affected by tree root, so.
Lay it like you're laying tile, I mean, essentially, is what you would be doing.
It's a pretty deep, we did the sidewalks over on West Marcus Street based on DOT regs, and there was, you know, sub-bays compacted, and you layer up so it doesn't, the ideas wouldn't heave, but.
What about, it's only May 13th, each of us knows some of the players in Historic Red Hook, we could chat them up a little bit, I think that'd be inclined to offer our ability to grab a grant, we can't promise we can get the pure bluestone concept.
I mean, the folks over at Duchess County Planning, you know, that would require a phone call, just to kind of present. phone call, just to kind of present it to them and see what their feedback is initially. Yeah, you could do that now, for application, so we would.
Talk to Audra and.
'Cause you see them a lot, too, you'll be, you're always in traffic.
Yeah.
We, we have four, whatever, you know, four months to figure it out.
I'll, I'll reach out to, to Audra.
Spin, spin your brains on it, yeah.
Before we kill it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll jump to cell tower generator bidding update. This is that shared generator, we wanna put up a tower on a street and give backup power to our cell customers without each of them building a individually owned generator. We had CT Mail working on it, and I happen to think I should probably get an RFP. In your packets, they, they did come in cheaper than another engineering firm to do slab design, bidding, to get the right specs for the generator and the layout, and you'll see that in your packets. So it looks like we'll go ahead. The various cell customers are under federal pressure to get these generators in place, so if I remember the numbers right, I think CT Mail was 12 for, and Delaware was 14 for, and.
It looks to be apples to apples.
We do have the ability to pick professional consulting.
CT Mail's 11 for.
11 for, so I misstated. But the other guys are 14 for, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I would, we've been moving ahead fairly well. We're also working with David Growth, our cell tower consultant, but on the cell tower bidding, I would like to just tell CT Mail to go ahead, and what we're doing, we're, the goal is, we're splitting the costs with the tenants, again, it's like the water loop extension, we're, we're, the downside, we'll probably have to use our line of credit to fund certain things and get reimbursed by these guys. And so I'd move that we continue working with CT Mail on the cell tower generator bidding project, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Looks like the last thing on the formal agenda is resolution to adopt the modification of the sewer law. And in our packets, we have that resolution. And I think I might have moved mine to.
Number 28, huh?
26.
Thanks. Yeah, I think we numbered this one earlier in the afternoon, 'cause we had this one earlier.
Do we have a local law number?
Two.
So it works in conjunction with the document we were looking at and talking about earlier that picks the various sections and subsections we're modifying. And then, Mr. Trapp, would you care to read the resolution for us?
Yeah, could I borrow yours? I buried it, mine somewhere here. Okay. Local law number two, 2019, resolution to adopt proposed amendments to the village sewer law.
Resolution 26.
Oh, 26, local law two, resolution 26. Whereas a proposed form of a local law entitled, parenthetic, a local law to amend chapter 145 sewers, in parentheses, the proposed local law has been submitted to the Village Board of Trustees of the village of Redhook, parenthetic, the board, and whereas the proposed local law amends and clarifies the obligations of landowners within the active service area of the sewer system to connect to the sewer system and the costs associated therewith. And whereas on April 8, 2019, the board determined that the proposed local law is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, parenthetic, SECRE. And whereas a duly noticed public hearing was held on May 13, 2019, during which all those who wished to speak were heard and their testimony recorded. Now therefore be it resolved by the board as follows. Number one, the board hereby adopts said proposed local law as local law number two of 2019, parenthetic, the law. Number two, that the village clerk, be and she hereby, is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the village code of the village of Redhook, to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of New York, and take all other actions as may be required by law. Okey-dokey.
Okay. So in the last, the question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to vote on roll call, which resulted as follows. So we're calling it Resolution 26. I would put into motion form that we adopt Resolution 26, which incorporates modifications into our sewer use law, known as local law two. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I think it's gonna be, the clerk's gonna have to take this. This always is interesting, 'cause these will get inserted into by code, general code, into like, but it's all labeled here, so it's just important that the two documents go together. So we have motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? It looks like roll call, Ed Blondell, yes. Brent Kalachek, yes. On the back, Mr. Charles Lang?
Yes.
Jennifer Norris?
Yes.
And Mr. Jay Trapp?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, and motion carries, the resolution becomes local law number two. Let's see, I got a bunch of check marks here. I think we can forego executive session tonight, it's been a longer meeting than we planned for. In the general business headings, public comments, we have Mr. Beekman in the audience, and we also, whatever the board wants to talk about, too, but. What's on your mind, Mr. Beekman?
Two questions, or two things. Last, last month, you said on the garbage tags, you mentioned this, there was, you buy 10, you get one? That was last month, right? Well, when I went and asked about it, they said they weren't doing it this year.
Oh, yeah?
So.
How many did you buy? We'll give you a credit, what do you got? We'll take your.
Just wanna, you know, let everybody know, 'cause, you know, nobody knows about it, and they don't know about it, your staff don't know. It's gonna be confusing, you're not gonna sell tags.
I'm pretty sure Jennifer mentioned it, and then.
I'm pretty sure you mentioned it, 'cause that's why I brought it up. I stopped in on another thing, I said, well, is that, you know, we get the buy 10, get one? Oh, no, I don't think we're doing it this year. Okay.
Well, here's what we'll do, we're good, we'll warrant that if you can prove you spent and bought 10, and we'll give you one now, and, sorry about that.
We're just happy you're using our garbage system.
The other thing, you're talking about the sidewalk on Cherry Street on the corner there, I think you're gonna end up with huge traffic problems. Even though it's not a parking area, in the mornings especially, a lot of vehicles, big vehicles, double park and running for coffee. You got buses, dump trucks, beer trucks, soda trucks, milk trucks coming down that road. And right now, they park up on the, on the grass a little bit, they could get out of the way. Once you put a curb in, they're gonna be blocking the street.
We don't necessarily have to put a curb in, we could set it back so there's a,
Well, if you.
You know, right-of-way, a, a green space between the, the street and the sidewalk too, right?
Yeah, but you could.
Which would be better for snow storage.
If one of these bigger rigs hits that, comes up the curbing, let's say, it'll crack the sidewalk.
What kind of big rigs go on there? I mean, I know beer trucks, but.
Anything. Forty-foot trailers come down, depends, they can't make the turn on Grave Street, so they gotta back into the masons or all the way back to nine, 'cause they cannot make the swing. Some of them know they can go over straight across to CVS, but a lot of them are out-of-towners, and how they get these rigs in and out, down the road in the first place. But from swinging on nine, it's, I mean, 199 is wider.
They don't go down Grave Street, do they?
They come down my street, and they get wedged up against a pole and stuff, and on my front lawn, and then they gotta back, all the way back down Grave Street, back to Market Street.
Well, it's a good point, we'll look at that, 'cause.
Just to look, because you get quite a bit of traffic there, and you're gonna get blockage. I mean, it's something just to look at, as far as, especially if you're doing a curb. If you do the other bounce around, you know, your slopes up, I guess you can get by with that, but when you say sidewalks, I'm thinking curb right-of-way.
Yeah, we've done the flush curb, but, yeah, it's something, I think we're gonna put our brains on it. May 31, I think they have their first full green lawn in place, and then they're having some on June 8th, so we can look at what they end up looking like, and they're just looking for a little more walkable access, but we'll look at it.
Okay, sit.
Board members, anything else from our side that we didn't talk about?
Just real quick, I forgot to mention the community build that's been going on at the rec park.
Oh, yeah.
With the new playground, it's really been a great thing to be involved in. They actually need help two additional evenings this week, Wednesday and Thursday, from 5 to 7. They have two truckloads of wood chips coming in that need to be spread, so if you're available and can grab a rake, help out.
I heard you, what night did you say?
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wanna have our Thursday meeting over there?
I know, right? From 5 to 7, but it's, it's really been, I went over there the first weekend, it was muddy.
I heard that, yeah.
But it's, it's a lot of fun, and it's gonna be amazing when it comes out.
Much more fun last Saturday.
Yeah, I can imagine. So, I just got that.
We talked about the weather, but it's been strange, like, it rained like crazy yesterday and today again.
So depressing.
I don't know where it can all go, I mean, the ground level water must be two feet below grade right now.
That person should be in good shape, right?
Yes.
Don't complain.
I know, but, and then, let's see, looks like we're done with public comment, board comment. I think it's time for Mr. Brent. I guess I should pay some bills and authorize everybody was, I think, peering at the voucher pack. We need a motion to pay bills after audit, is there a second?
Second.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Brent?
I can make a motion that we adjourn this evening, May 13th, meeting of the Village Board of Trustees.
I would second that, looks like it's 9:00 PM, and all in favor?
No.
Carries anyway, 4 to 1, Trapp wants to work all night. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Jesus.